For the October 9th, 2013 Regular Village Board Meeting, the time is now 6:32. You will rise and pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Trustee Gray. Mayor Gonzalez.
Here.
Ward.
Here.
Pearson is back here.
Up.
Here.
Raisik.
Here.
Good. At this point, we have opened the public pertaining to agenda items only. Please open your accounts in three minutes, come to the podium, give your name and address. Okay. At this point, we'll move on to the consent agenda. I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So.
Okay. Consent on all subrises. Provo please.
Trustee Gonzalez.
Aye.
Ward.
Yes.
Pearson. Sorry, isn't he here? Up.
Yes.
Raisik.
Yes.
Andrew.
Yes.
Okay. Courts report.
I'm reporting.
Okay. The administrative reports.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I will attempt to be as brief as possible during our agenda this evening. Item number F1 in your packet represents a, it's just a reminder or reaffirmation of the consensus that was given at the last board meeting for the purchase of a replacement copier for the police department in the amount of $9,527.
So I need a confirmation vote on that, accept the motion.
I'll take the motion.
Okay. Up, Raisik. Provo please.
Trustee Ward. Yes. Up.
Yes.
Raisik.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Gonzalez.
Yes.
Thank you. Item F2 on the agenda has to do with a sign request from Remax Realty. A letter is attached from Mr. Michael Mondello, a Remax realtor, requesting an off-site signage at Industrial Drive and Route 50 for the purpose of selling property located at 6025 Industrial Drive. He is requesting a six-month timeframe for that. I believe Mr. Mondello is here this evening, if there are any questions.
If you recall, this is the same location that a year and a half ago, two years ago, was given a temporary for going out of business in.
Probably asking a question, it's a quick answer to it. Can this go through P&amp;Z first? You have a temporary sign?
No, sir. The reason it's at this level is because our code does not allow for any off-site signage and it has to come to this board level for approval.
And regarding P&amp;Z, there's also been discussion with some consideration for some allowances for off-site signage for open spaces of that nature. I guess the question I would have is this could be a freestanding buried-in-the-ground sign, or is this going to be, what is the nature of the site itself?
It'll be freestanding on two metal posts, and I do have permission from property owners to put the sign up.
Who's the property owner of it?
Peter Hemphillows and his sister, Pat Chisels. I may not drop them at first.
Could I ask the size of the sign? I didn't.
More by eight. More by eight. Professionally done. I have a folder if I can see.
Let's see, we're loose. Is this for your, this is not a parcel of land, this is a, your warehouse?
Subject property is located on 60.25 Industrial Drive, which is quite a bit west and track to try to affect the sale of the subject property that's quite a bit requesting that be on the northwest corner. Is that a double-sided sign? It would be a paper.
It would be on the north side of industrial or the south side?
It would be on the north side.
I don't see the address there.
I'm sorry.
It's likely because your name's buried in the avenue.
Is that a hand-stained wood?
Is this, yeah, what is this? Is this a core plaster?
It's a core plaster. It's a heavy core plaster. We don't use wood because it deteriorates quickly where the core plaster stays nice and fresh. So it's stiff enough that a wind underneath would break it. It's not going to be moving out and snapping all over the house.
I presume it's 10 mil and something 4 mil and something like that.
Okay.
Pass this around if you guys want to, if you guys can see it from there, if you want to say all against the same other room. Any more questions for your realtor? Anybody want to make a motion on that?
I'll second.
To approve?
Yes.
Okay. So, Raisik and Gray, lead through the discussion. Okay. Provo please.
Trustee Up.
Yes.
Raisik.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Gonzalez.
Yes.
And Ward.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Just, just for clarification, just make sure that code enforcement is aware of when you're putting it out there so they can set the clock, if you will, for the six months.
Great. All right. And Julie, you're welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Item F3 on the agenda has to do with a redevelopment agreement at 5357 Port Street. If you recall, this initial proposal was before this board on the September 11th board meeting, and since that time, myself and Attorney Gorcheski have met with, with the individuals bringing the proposal forward and have come down to three proposals. They're listed there and in order of preference, and the order of preference is from the constituents, not, not from the village. And if, basically, it boils down to a redevelopment agreement of the property located there. There will be some demolition involved, there will be addition in square footage, bringing, I did show pictures, you did have pictures in your packet at the September 11th meeting. And additionally, what was not receiving sales tax, the village was not receiving sales tax from that location prior, as part of the redevelopment agreement, there will be sales tax collected and just, you know, on behalf of the village at that point. And we do have the owner and the, or the proposed owner and the TIF developer here, if there are any questions. And I do apologize for getting this information late to you, but if you take a look at the last page of your packet or of this agenda item, I have tried to, because this is in TIF District Number 4, I have provided the current balance in the TIF District, the annual revenues that are generated via real estate taxes for the TIF District on an annual basis, and the existing encumbrances as we know them as of today for that TIF District. We have an existing redevelopment agreement within the TIF. We also have a payment due to the Will County Highway Department for the signalization, our share of the signalization at Egyptian in Moni, Manhattan. And just a note on that, I wanted everyone, especially the trustees, to note that although the initial quoted amount for that signalization was 75, we did budget a little bit over that for contingency. However, the county is now seeking for our share, $156,424.82. Needless to say, I'm in negotiations with the county on eliminating those excessive costs there. But getting back to the project at hand, Mr. Fieldman, Mr. Stafford, if you'd like to step up to the microphone, any of the trustees may have some questions. For the trustees, it is marked confidential at this point. We're really not looking to negotiate the, the agreement out here. It's, so if we could refer to these by proposal number, that would be preferred at this point. Mr. Fieldman, would you like to just give a cursory overview? You may touch on a few points that I missed on.
Thank you, Mr. Wallace.
You bet.
And thank you, Mayor and trustees, for inviting us here this afternoon, this evening, for the opportunity to explain this project. As many of you came to the meeting tonight, you probably came past the 5357 building, and we're professionally calling it kind of an eyesore for the village. And the drawings that we've given you to show what we're proposing to do is a complete renovation, a gutting, demolition of some of the portion of the building, complete rehabbing and total code-upgrading. It's really going to be quite an outstanding-looking facility. We think it's something that's going to be proud, the village is going to be proud of, we're certainly going to be proud of. And this is, I've been doing TIF work for 34 years, this is exactly what TIF is to be used for, is principally the redevelopment of existing buildings. And I'm proud to say that Attorney Gorcheski and I worked together on the formation of that TIF several years ago, I'm not quite sure how many.
Too many years ago.
Yeah. My memory's gone, I'm a bit too old there. So this is exactly what we had in mind to, to redevelop the existing buildings in town, and 5357's going to look quite great what we've done. The total project, all in, we believe is going to be around $500,000. And our request is based on a standard, a very typical request at 50% of the project cost. And because George and I are very pleased that we were able to have several meetings with the mayor and then also with Mr. Wallace and Mr. Gorcheski to talk about the project and make sure that what our request was is within the parameters of what the village just said would, would like. So if you have any questions in regards to the standard of construction, you want to get answered.
When you mentioned a drawing, I had no drawing.
If they, and I apologize, they were in the September 11th packet when this initially came before the board.
Well, obviously, it's an improvement, I believe. Maybe to motivate someone to rent some space. But you know what typically happens is when, it's like a domino effect, if you ever watch America's Funniest Videos, they'll have the board set up a wall with dominos, nothing happens till you push the first one over. And typically, this is a domino effect where one guy starts, and then maybe some of the other property owners along Port Street or along Gunners Highway then would say, hey, they fixed that building up, we can maybe use some of the TIF money, we can fix our buildings up as well. And then, of course, by the way, if you'd like to mention, we're going to have a few extra new jobs that are going to be created, and as Dave mentioned, we're going to generate some new sales tax. And I did notice that, but other three proposals that you have, is there any one
in particular that would be more, like, in the case of started, or any of these three?
I believe that whatever the board and ability to count.
You can make this.
Whenever you, I would be grateful. The other day, I spoke with Dave at Lincoln, we went over all the numbers and we kind of have a rank in our order of our preference. And it's, it's important to note that Dave did a great job negotiating with us, where as we said, if we had it structured in this, typically, communities will provide sales tax sharing with the business, and we have stated that if we can have these proposals approved, we would forego any request for any sales tax sharing. In other words, the village would keep all of that.
We have two questions up here, the attorney and Wallace.
Mr. Sanderson, could you elaborate on the intent on the, your plan to open up wholesale slash retail at that location as well in conjunction with your existing?
Sure. In my industry, the closest supply house for heating and ventilation is to the south would be Kentucky, to the north would be Orland Park, you know, Tilling Park. And to the, basically, to the east, to the west would be Alway to Joliet, and to the east would be in San Juan. So what I propose to do is open up a wholesale supply house for the air conditioning ventilation, and also a hardware store, you know, to sell hardware also. If we don't have any, hey, close, the closest to that would be a Moldivo.
And tone or?
Correct. Correct.
Specific to your industry or just in general?
No, you have a, it's, yes. It might not be full service to start, but that's what my goal would be here at the point.
On a modest scale.
Correct.
Sure. Where are you, any questions?
Your funding all set up with your local lender?
Yes.
And at one time, you're going to tell us pretty soon who your local lender is?
Absolutely. Absolutely.
But there, you got a commitment letter?
Yes, I, well, I have that, yes, I have a commitment letter. I'm not in my hand tonight, but yes, and I can provide you guys with that. That's a great customer, because they're anxious to do the project, so they call George on a continual basis. They're ready to go, yes. And Trustee Gonzalez, you run up a good point, too, is about the way the proposal is structured, people sometimes would think, well, if you're going to give the money upfront before they start construction. What we're going to do is we're going to complete the construction and upon receipt of an occupancy permit, that's when we would receive the funds for, from the village. So we actually have to complete the work.
Correct. And if I, if I might just reiterate, if we, if the board chooses, one, chooses to take action on one of these proposals, the next step is to sit down and negotiate the fine points of the redevelopment agreement in its final state, and it will be back before this board for final approval at that point. Additionally, during that time, I would ask Mr. Stafford to sit down with her building department so that we can, he has an expectation, we have an expectation, and we're on the same page as to what is required to get that project up and running so that there, you know, there's no misconceptions about plans or site plan or anything like that. So, thank you.
Do you know how many years are left in this TIF District?
Yes, turns to Trustee Gonzalez, this is our youngest TIF. I don't know the exact number of years left, I want to, I want to say that I believe it's 14. It's either 14 or 16, but this is the highest level here that they're asking to go out these four years.
And this is TIF 4, right?
That is correct.
And if I recall correctly, there's some stormwater she's in that vicinity there, is any of that going to be able to be addressed during this?
He will address that as part of this site plan.
And it's actually in the sworn statement, contract statement, that would provide it with the law.
Okay. All right. So I, just to, before we actually take a motion or the vote, I'd like to do this a little differently and get a consensus of what your preferred one, your preferred option is before we cast it up for a single vote. So if I could simply ask what your preference is, 1, 2, 3, and somebody will go first, tell me what your preferences are, and that, randomly, it's fine, it doesn't matter.
I would, I would go for 1.
Trustee Gonzalez.
And I would say for 2.
Good. Trustee Ruth, number 2.
Good. Trustee Up, am I correct that these are in the order that you, your elections, because they're in your mind, I say 1.
Trustee Ruth, 1. One, 2, or 3.
I have a question real quick. On proposal number 3, if in fact we don't go forward with proposal number 3, does that mean this deal will not happen?
We definitely need to have participation from the village to be able to complete this project. Without it, we can't, we can't do the complete renovation that we lack, bring it to the standard that everybody would like.
But proposal number 3 is what the village can put, correct? Assistance.
Mr. Fieldman, I have a.
He didn't, yeah.
Yeah, I believe, I believe the question is, if the village selects proposal number 3 to offer, will that project still go forward because it's a lesser total amount?
If I can answer that 2 once again, whatever the village comes to an agreement on is, I will make eager of the 3. Absolutely. I think.
Are we going to get the same product basis?
Yes, it's, as Trustee Up recognized, they're kind of, they are ranked in the order that we, we were.
So we're, my second question, if you could take number 3. I'm sorry. Trustee, second question, Mr. Fieldman. I'm sorry. Thank you, Mr. Stafford. Your vote, your proposed tax assessments, you think that's a bit aggressive?
We need the.
What you projecting for tax revenue?
Yes. I'm not sure what you.
Looking at.
You referencing my letter?
Yes, it is, it is the letter. He has a copy.
I think we're pretty accurate. I've done a lot of real estate production, after production, a lot of TIF work over the last 30 years, and I'm pretty close on the numbers. We, we never know what the assessor's offices are going to come up with. At this time, we're co-counting, we thought the building was going to be valued, we had a million and a half million, and then with a $3 billion evaluation, so we called them up and said, we'll take a check.
Well, I'm, that's fine, but I'm looking at your projected tax revenue that the village will be receiving for wholesale and retail. That's my concern. I think that's a bit aggressive. I'm, I lean a little bit more conservative on things like that.
What's your paragraph or your?
We're looking at the bottom of page 1 of your letter, which you're, I'm sorry. It's the 123 paragraph from the top, first, first page. You're looking at 123 to 155,000.
I believe that's referring to what Mr. Fieldman's point was attempting there. Trustee Pearson was additional tax increment received to the, property tax increment, not sales tax, to the village over the remaining years of the TIF District. So not into an item, but up until the TIF District is projected to end. That's the benefit the village.
They think it goes back into the pool, it's a lot of use for the projects.
Exactly. It goes right back into the TIF pool.
Okay. Okay, so, Trustee Pearson, do you have a preference?
3.
So we've got 3 with 1, 2 with 2, and 1 with 3. Now, at this point, if you guys want to have any further discussion, then I'll accept the motion. Just, any more discussion amongst yourselves or whatever pertaining to, I want to come to this, it's fine, I just, I was trying to identify generally so you all knew what each other was thinking of this.
So, so if you were, proposal 1, why do you believe or what do you think proposal 1 would be better for us?
For us or for development?
Well, I like the idea of hardware.
Well, yeah.
We'll be on it. Quick question for you, Mr. Stafford, where is your other location of yours?
Right there. Same, same property down in Moni.
That, that is you still.
Right, and it still will be, you know, in the future.
And you've been there how many years?
I've been there going on 40.
Okay.
And I, actually, I was in, on Industrial Drive also for, was that a year in your scope, 67 year? I've been in town for 11.
Okay. Okay, so you just want to expand your, your business, you know, different side facets of your business?
Correct. And I, and I like, I would really, really like to make it look a lot better than it is.
2.
And I can't get any, I rent that company, or I can't get any help. But that was a great one. And if you know, I don't know if anybody knows, but I mean, a lot of improvements just.
So are you buying the building too?
Yes, correct.
You are buying and rehabbing.
Yes, I am. By the way, Trustee Gonzalez, the point about 1 being better than 2, we then have less interest to pay to the bank. The less interest that we have to pay, the more money we can invest in the property.
But that also has an inverse effect on the money available within the pool for other development.
And I'm just thinking 4 years out too, if we're making payments within, in the 4 years.
Sure.
In our initial outlay.
I can speak to that just a little bit. I have done a cost projection, and again, I might refer to the last page on here, you can see that under TIF 4, with its current obligations and proposed future expenditures and, and income of, of real estate taxes, you can see the very last line, how much would be in there. And then, of course, you can also, that is without this development. So with the development going in there initially, we are going to, we are going to have a deficit of money to spend toward other projects, exactly, as, certainly as the mayor pointed out. But I also took a look, the reason this is a little bit temperamental is because most of the trustees realize that the Egyptian Trail reconstruction slated for 2015 is, our matching shares coming from motor fuel tax as well as TIF 4 funding, and no matter what happens with or without this project, we will, as a municipality, have to fund some money in advance to TIF 4, just for that construction project alone. But it has a good revenue stream with the increased real estate taxes that will be generated, that, that $85,000 a year will certainly increase on an annual basis for the TIF to receive money back and be able to pay back the, the corporate fund, you know, probably within a three-year timeframe. So I don't see this project being detrimental to the overall.
And just, and just for everybody to remember, the TIF Districts are defined for the purpose of helping us overcome the extreme phases of life, those situations where we have perhaps renters or whatever else that are looking to purchase like Mr. Stafford is, and improve the quality and the presence of our community at the same time while expanding his business opportunities within our community, providing better services, it's suitable for the zoning. It's not like somebody trying to get TIF funds to support residential development in a commercial district. It's not that at all. This is perfectly aligned for the purposes, and the question is, is frankly, how much do we want to burn, and in what method? So.
And I just would like to make the point that, no disrespect, I do not know the current property owner, but that property is rental property, and you see the state that it's in, it's, it's right before us. We're getting invested interest with the property changing hands and, you know, moving in and developing that property even further than what it is now. So, you know, to me, that's, that makes sense for the community overall. We have people who are vested in the community.
And how soon can you get started on this project? Is it something that?
I'm looking to start tomorrow, but.
I heard that, actually, you're recently too, and I've yet to see some of that too, so. Sorry.
She's not sorry about you.
But I can't do. So for, for real, that you'll be able to get started on this, and then how fast will the project get done?
Sure. If I can get the concrete done, performance, I can, I can finish within probably 90 days after that.
Mr. Stafford, do you have a loan commitment already then?
In the final details, as the administrative board and I will be worked out, once this, once the initial choice is selected here, the administrative will work out the final details and come before the board for final approval. So, at this point, other discussion or?
I'd just like to ask, I think it's a simple question. You mentioned the hardware. Is it going to be a major change or just?
No, no, it's going to be a private owner. I won't, I won't have any other, it'll be hopefully your talent.
Sheet metal and heating would be the same?
Absolutely.
So basic nuts bolts?
Yes.
So basic nuts, bolts, tape measures, et cetera, little things like that?
In the time that I've been in this town, pretty old, eleven years, there's a lot of people in this town that like to do things themselves, and they can't purchase anything.
You don't have to sell it, so I was waiting for you to say grocery store, and you've been in like a... I told you, Don.
Hardware slash grocery store? I might be safe to address that?
Go ahead.
I'm working on a major grocery store project in Harvey, and the guys that are involved in that, I've been pitching on, on coming out here, fifteen or twenty thousand square feet. I was involved with Pat Fee's property years ago, we were trying to do something there and that didn't pan out, so the mayor and Dave have talked to me about the Egyptian Trail, the village has some property there, and I told, I promised the mayor that I would try to get somebody to come up and look at that.
I'm still shook, Greg. Because I believe we have some good incentives if you talk to Mr. Wallace or someone like him.
He's a tough bargainer. He's a tough bargainer, though. Thank you. Thank you.
More discussion or a motion? Do you want me to do a survey of consensus again?
Yep.
All right. Start on the other side, trustee Pearson. Of all of them, three, are three? Trustee Razor, three?
One.
One?
One.
Two?
Who wants to make the first motion?
I'll make the motion for number one.
I have a second, Ed.
Okay. Any, any discussion? Okay, there we go. Roll call, please.
Trustee Pop?
Yes.
Razor?
No.
Gray?
No.
Gonzalez?
Yes.
Hord?
Yes.
Pearson?
No.
Mr. Mayor, let's go to the other.
You've got Razor, Gray, Pearson, no. Pop, Gonzalez?
Hord, yes.
And the discussion goes on to, let me ask you this simple question here, for those that voted for one, it seems to be in close proximity here. Would those that voted for one consider voting for number three?
Point of order, Mr. Mayor. I don't think you can, you know...
I can abstain and can throw the whole thing off and start all over.
Then that would be the proper way to do it then. Right now, you have a vote on the floor, and...
I want to get a good consensus on the board. That's my, that's my goal, that's my purpose. Mr. Chair, what are my options?
Either the option, your honor, you indicated not to vote, and the motion would die, you have the option to break the vote, break the tie, so it's your call. If you want to vote, that's fine, if you don't, then the motion dies.
We have a full board as we do, I just assume, have the four votes necessary for it to take place from the board, so I will abstain. I will consider a second motion.
May I make a comment before we do that?
You can make a discussion.
Discussion, yeah, right. The contractors are in agreement with any of the three. It seems like we can agree on three, I believe. So I would be willing to change mine to three, if I may. Our preference was in the order of one, two, and three. My recommendation, my suggestion would be is if you had two votes for two, three votes for one, if you're not comfortable with one, then have the number one votes vote with the number two vote.
I think we had a leaning towards three as well, though. I'm just saying, Don, I get it, I get it. So at this point, I'll, I'll go back to the board for a second motion, or I'll entertain another motion for another choice. Or we just move on.
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion for proposal number three.
I'll second.
Okay. Pearson, Razor, roll call, please.
Trustee Gray?
No.
Gonzalez?
Is there room for discussion afterwards?
You can just, I, I'm not sure the format.
Discussion took place to bullshit people.
No.
Hord?
No.
Pearson?
Yes.
Pop?
Yes.
Razor?
Yes.
Can I make a motion for two?
Absolutely. Mr. Wallace?
I'm sorry, you gotta wait for...
I'm sorry, I did. And I'll take the same position I did last time, I'm gonna cast a vote.
Motion for two?
So under other discussion, then once you...
Can I write the window of discussion now?
We can take discussion again.
Mr. Justice, that being said, my hesitation is with the initial cash outlay for the village, and I know you said that there's, we're willing to put forward, or we can move TIF funds around too, but I'm just concerned about the initial cash outlay.
Can I ask a question to trustee Pearson?
Sure.
Which seems to be on the option number three. Are you looking at the total dollar amount, or are you looking at the upfront?
I am looking at total dollar. I am looking at over the stretch of time.
So may, might I make a suggestion? That we go with the upfront of number one, I'm just trying to identify if this is worth, with a total dollar amount of number three?
Suggesting two, an upfront of number one?
I'm just trying to identify, to satisfy the expectations of everyone. Okay, it doesn't, it's, it's just throwing it out as a consideration. If you guys don't want to do it, that's fine.
Then, Mr. Gonzalez, we have to go back to Mr. Fieldman.
Just under discussion, we've eliminated proposal one and proposal three. If the village wants to move this forward, proposal two is the last choice that's on the table without going back and renegotiating. And what happens with that is, you know, we all understand this is time sensitive. That's, that's the only point that I wanted to make.
We're discussing, I'd love to say that this is economic development.
Absolutely.
We need to pass this, that's how I feel.
And this is...
That's why my numbers have changed, and they'll change again.
Okay, by the way, just for a little bit of the point of interest, I had considered making a rule today that you can only speak if you raise your left hand. Sorry. All right, trustee Hord?
Can I make a motion for number two?
Absolutely.
I'll second that.
All right, trustee Hord, trustee Gray. Roll call, please.
Trustee Hord? Yes, it's Pearson.
Yes.
Pop?
Yes.
Razor?
No.
Gray?
Yes.
Gonzalez?
Yes.
And this is called democracy. Thank you for your participation in that. Mr. Fieldman?
Thank you.
Mr. Stafford, thank you very much.
Mayor, I have one question.
Yes, sir.
First of all, much thank you for your support, and it is economic development, we look forward to this. And I have a technical question for those who are currently investigating. Typically, the TIF projects you and I have worked on for many years, you don't want the construction to start prior to the signing of a redevelopment agreement. If we, if we're confident that we're going to have a comfortable agreement, the language could state expenses incurred prior to. And so what our thinking is, why I'm asking that question is, we would like to begin as soon as possible.
Because of the weather and everything.
So I can have a further discussion, but I'm worried about this, but...
I really don't believe that's gonna be an issue, because I think this redevelopment agreement will be back before this board at the next meeting, which is two weeks.
Okay.
And unless you have plans and site plan ready to go, I don't believe you'll get them within two weeks.
Okay, great, that's great. Thank you very much.
You bet.
Thank you, rule.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Item F four on the agenda is parking lot maintenance for Village Hall, Public Works, and Police Department. Superintendent Brazil obtained these quotes, and I would defer to him, should there be any questions. We're looking for approval of a contract, staff recommendation, approval of contract, or some trouble paving based on the, the numbers that came in.
Any discussion?
I actually have a question for superintendent. We redo these parking lots, and I don't know if we know the solution or what is going on. As you make the turn here, it's been for about a year and a half, it always seems to be leaking.
I can answer that, trustee Gray.
Yeah, hope so.
If you've noticed, when we came in the parking lot today, brush patch, flat cap, that has been fixed, and has already been repaired, a drain has been installed, under drain, and in the center island, as you know, all the drains for the parking lot, and from north to, or from the south to the north, because of the pitch, the angle, we picked up the drainage at the center island, and now under tow that to the drain, with the drains we've already repaired that, so it's dry. It's been proven we've had a rainfall, substantial rainfall, it stayed dry, we're ready for the next set. Art of this, pass, and ready to go for it.
Thanks.
Journey on the spot.
I usually don't look down when I drive, so...
I care for the children.
Any other discussion or questions of the superintendent?
Just a quick question, Mr. Brazil. What is your track record with Roble? I mean, what do you know about it? Reliable, they do good work, I mean, I know the answer, because I think I've gotten to know you more.
With my, dealing with them over the last year or so, since my position, I have had no issues with Roble paving. We've recommended them to other people in the town, they've worked out quite well, and he's willing to work with us on this.
And even though his, his office is actually out of town, he actually has property interests in our town as well.
Mr. Mayor, I apologize, I didn't stake the amounts for the public that are here. Sanchez paving was fifteen thousand, two hundred dollars, Roble paving twelve thousand, eight hundred sixty-five dollars.
Have we ever done any work with Sanchez people?
We haven't done any work with Sanchez, I think it rolls from Sanchez, and as with Roble, they both do exceptional work, and both won, you know, the business, of course. This was more of a cost saves, we did appropriate, or that for this to be done this year, we hold obviously the same standard, and we'll do that standard, and have a nice lives, we come in and complete some of the final repairs that were done, or the prestation at the same time, so that's why I picked the Roble paving estimate as helping the community bring money back, and also with the work that I see Roble doing firsthand.
And for the record, these are the only two proposals that came back?
Only the two that came back for the, a lot of timeframe that would fit within our short time that we have to be able to do this between the fence that are happening in a park, where the parkway, open, and...
Except a motion or something, would you like to make one?
I made that motion.
I'll second.
Razor? For which one?
I'm sorry?
Okay. For the amount of twelve thousand, eight hundred sixty-five dollars. Roll call, please.
Trustee Pop?
Yes.
Razor?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Gonzalez?
Yes.
Hord?
Yes.
Pearson?
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Item F five on my agenda has to do with tree removal proposal. These are trees that are, mineral ash ore infected. Again, Superintendent Brazil spearheaded this project with this quote, and at this time, I'd like to defer to him, the, however, the proposed amount is to remove trees that are within or on public right-of-way or public property that cause a concern for safety and liability, and the total cost here is eight thousand, forty-five dollars. That's tree removal and stump remoting. Are any questions? I'm sure Superintendent Brazil has the answer.
Superintendent Brazil, is this a full list throughout time?
This is not a full list. We've identified at this point another forty trees that are smaller that we can handle in-house, and at the same time, with these proposed trees being removed, we would get those remaining smaller trees that we handle in-house, stumps ground at the same time, that would be on a different proposal, but this would be most of the bigger trees that we can't handle in-house. As you can see, the diameter size that's listed, these are quite big trees, and they actually go down the main thorough in town with the ash being infected. Some will be hanging over railways, some will be hanging over sidewalks, and there are these are...
Question for you. So this would bore out the stumps too, correct? How about replacing them?
That would be identified in the future, which I've already received a couple proposals from other people, and we'll discuss that at a different time when I have that ready to go. I have been working with trustee Gonzalez on that, and we have a plan in place for the board's approval of the last tree ordinance that we passed not that long ago, to identify a contractor who will be able to supply us with a tree, finish identifying the parkway trees that we have right now, so that we can map them out, and then plan a future replacement with the remaining budget that we have.
So...
And so can you account to where the trees are?
But now, the ideal time to replace trees, to plant trees, is the rest of fall?
Fall and spring.
Fall or spring?
Correct, while the tree's still in orbit.
Okay. So we're saying that we, our goal, taking down trees is to, you know, I don't know if it's practical to replace all the trees that we're taking down in the, in the parkways, but to work towards replacing some of them?
That is the goal, as budget constraints for this type of project would hinder how fast would be go to a replacement, as the ordinance is outlined, it would be more high end of preference as far as the ones that are seen visually first, and then we would work out for the smaller areas to replace those that budgets were on.
And is there, wasn't that ordinance, there was something about, the freshman over here, a joint partnership between homeowner and village?
That was not established for this level, we actually were going to take that on more, I think the board chose to do that as a separate policy, I believe it was, because we did not want to outline the ordinance with that, we wanted to make, you know, a separate statement.
It was the intent, it was the intent to establish a policy to use available funds within that budgeted item, once the trees have been removed, that have all been infected, to use that budgeted amount towards replacement, either secure grants, and then use them as part of the funding, or partnership with the adjacent property owners.
So the budget for tree removal, or trees, I guess, is ten thousand?
Actually, it's twenty thousand.
Oh, it's twenty thousand?
Yes, sir.
And then with this, you know, this is, this proposal's eight thousand?
That is not what remains, trustee Hord. The total budget was twenty thousand, we have used a significant portion of that already up to date in removal of trees and so forth. We had a storm come through, where trees had to be trimmed up because branches were hanging. Several trees have already been taken down, we've already stumped round several locations on trees that Public Works have taken down, and now this is, what's really driving this is more of a liability issue, because it's on public right-of-way and things of that nature.
So you're saying we're above, we're above budget, over...
We're not over budget at this point.
We're getting pretty close to it.
But if we improve this...
It will still be within budget.
Okay, but then we will not have any money, we'll have very small...
We'll have limited amounts of money, but between trustee Gonzalez, myself, and superintendent Brazil, we do have a plan that, where we could start to execute some replacement yet this year. It would come back before this board, because we would be asking to spend some funds in ex... It would come back before this board because we would be asking to spend some funds in excess of that line item budget amount, but certainly well within the appropriated amount. But we would want the board to know that before we do it.
Thank you.
I'm going to say the motion on this to approve the recommendation of eight thousand, forty-five dollars?
So.
Second.
Okay, Gonzalez and Gray, roll call, please.
Trustee Grayson?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Gonzalez?
Yes.
Or?
Yes.
Pearson?
Yes.
Pop?
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, item F six on my agenda has to do with an industrial drive water main extension. Please note this is a confidential matter as it does require some negotiations with this project. The bottom, to get to the crux of this, is that at some point in, I don't mind mentioning the company, Greylar, a limited liability partnership built in, at the west end of Industrial Drive. And at some point, the water main was supposed to make it down there to that point. It never did, for whatever reason. However, Greylar does have a well and they have renewed interest in people wanting to rent the incubator business buildings there. And there is an issue with the fire suppression system. As that building fills up, the fire code requires a sprinkler system for so long. They have the system in, however, they don't have the supply that is necessary. So in order to have that supply, Greylar would have to invest in holding tank, a high pressure fire pump and things of that nature. And in the end, you still end up with a well and a piecemeal type operation. In discussions with, with representatives of Greylar, it was, I made a suggestion that we take a look at the cost to extend the water main from Whiting Way down to their location first so that we can understand what the actual dollar amount would be at. And in doing so, we did get engineers' cost opinion in the amount of eighty-seven thousand dollars. And Greylar has offered to put the money that they would spend on upgrading their fire system with the holding tank and the pump toward the installation of the water main, so long as they could spread that out over, over a term. And they asked for five years. I don't know if they asked for that, I limited it to five years. We still have time in that TIF as well there in TIF District number three. However, the watering work would be in TIF District number two, which does not create a problem. So what we're here for this board is to, if the board agrees with that, then we would go back and homogenize a redevelopment agreement for final approval at this board level. And that would be a project that we could actually have engineered and let because it doesn't have to be sixty degrees to lay water main. So we might be able to get that in yet this year. The benefits are, we are extending city service. It brings the water main actually down to the building that the gentleman was here asking, requesting the for sale sign for. It, you know, it just gets us that much closer to looping that twelve inch water main with the water main that is on Cleveland Avenue. Ultimately, that is made to come around and loop, which would improve water quality and availability within our system. Happy to answer any questions there, we have a representative from Greylar present to answer any questions as well.
Mr. Administrator?
Yes, sir.
Does either TIF three or TIF two, does this affect either of the Ridgeland projects that are proposed?
At this point, it, it would not. We do not have the Ridgeland projects slated for construction, although the engineering is complete. We're not moving that forward at this time because I have been in negotiations with a potential another project there that may require some alteration to the Ridgeland layout, design, if you will. So, and that is Ridgeland from Mooney Manhattan to Lakewood Drive. Ridgeland on the south end, from Brunson Road to the south, that does not lie within a TIF district and it's actually up to the municipality. That would be on a capital improvement plan because it doesn't lie within the TIF district in terms of for that at this time.
Any other questions?
I would like to say that, that without the improvements, either of these improvements, there is no occupancy available at that building. And again, it's like the situation we had earlier with Mr. Stafford, it's setting ourselves up for success. You know, they have some interested parties that would like to lease at their facility now. And, you know, really it's fire inspection that's older than the occupancy permit.
It's kind of a win-win for us too in the respect that Greylar is willing to extend the money that they would spend on their existing system and actually give us the money towards extending their water main.
True.
So it's, it's kind of a win-win thing.
In the future, I would like to say that should the village decide to do so, we could actually put a recapture on that water main for future development, which would even recapture any TIF dollars that we put into this project. That recapture would go back into the TIF district, but nevertheless, because on the south side of Industrial Drive, there's additional room for development. So should you have a developer come in, want to tap onto that water main, if we have a recapture in place, that's how we get our development cost back.
I want to say the motion to approve this?
Just a couple of questions. And then on the second page, there's an amount for contingency, what is that contingency?
On every engineering estimate, you will have a contingency amount because when you are in the ground, you never know what you're.
So this is a plus or minus then?
It's a plus or minus on that. And there may be a little variation on that, if the board gives approval to move forward again, what we're going to do is homogenize the redevelopment agreement and also get a true engineering cost opinion. In other words, they will lay out that water main so that we understand. Superintendent Brazil will have some input because of valving, hydrant location, things of that nature. We have to get a little bit more specific, so, you know, eighty-seven thousand, it wouldn't surprise me if, if we, you know, approached the hundred thousand dollar, in all honesty. But by lineal footage, this is what they come up with.
And we're good with TIF three?
Definitely. And I do have a call in to a mountainated bank which administers our TIF two. And there are some funds in there as well that are available to the municipality for improvements within there. So we could utilize some of that money out of TIF two. It's not near as, that was a front loaded TIF, so it doesn't have near the spendable dollars for TIF improvements in there because all that was done upfront and it was front loaded with bonding, so all the TIF dollars now go to pay down the bonds.
Would the recapture, adding that meter be part of this contingency then or would that go on the, the actual project itself?
The recapture is, we would take the, the final numbers, construction costs. And a recapture is actually something that I would work with attorney Rucheski on and develop that, that would actually be passed by this board. Attorney Rucheski, is that an ordinance that gets passed?
Yes, sir.
Okay. It would be passed by this board as an ordinance. Generally, they're in place for about twenty years, so it gives plenty of time for, should the TIF expire and not get renewed, you still have that recapture in place.
True, thank you.
I want to say the motion to move.
Okay.
Second. Pearson and Pop? Roll call, please.
Trustee Gray?
Yes.
Gonzalez?
Yes.
Or?
Yes.
Pearson?
Yes.
Pop? Grayson?
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and last but not least, item number F seven is simply a proposal by Vantage Point Engineering. I would like to say the mayor and myself have had lengthy conversations with different engineering firms to best fit our needs. Vantage Point is one that, that most certainly has some skill set to offer to the municipality. And what we're looking to do here is to establish a topographical survey of the entire municipal complex area, which would include the village hall, all of the park area and public works as well. And additionally, have a property boundary survey done because the village does not have this information at hand at this point. That is the first step into, well, moving forward with a development plan for the entire complex having to do with, with parks and municipal use cohabitating on this parcel of property.
Stuff as simple as work with sidewalks for ADAC compliance and things like that will all be covered as part of this. Questions?
Just one little thing, on the last page, there's additional services. At the last sentence, two sentences, this proposal will be open for acceptance until August thirty, two thousand thirteen.
I have an additional in writing, an extension for this. Thank you very much for suggesting that.
Would you ask for it? Thank you. I want to say the motion? Two more.
Second.
Okay, Pearson and Razor? Roll call, please.
Uh, I guess, and I can certainly see the need to know where our boundaries lie within this, this area back here, that makes sense to me. I guess the topographic survey is a little bit more of a stretch for me. Tell me, tell me, can someone tell me why we need this? I, I know you did, you did, David, but, I don't know. It's, it's not like there's a lot of, it's just not like hills and mounds or anything.
Even if you go out and watch the kids play football, sometimes playing is like. Because there, there's enough, we're on a, we're on a high area, but it's relatively flat out here. And even simple things like figuring out the grade on the parking area on the other side of the pavilion is critically important when you're dealing with sidewalk elevation and the appropriate pitch because of handicap compliance and things of that sort. Mr. Wallace?
Yeah, I, I believe that they're indicating they will do that in, in two foot increments, if I'm not mistaken. However, the purpose of that is, we already have drainage issues out there. The purpose of the topography is to, in the development stage, once you have the topography, you know which way the water needs to run, what abilities you have to make it run that way. We have some drains that have been established on, on the side of the football field that probably were not, you know, they were put in shooting from the hip. And again, it served a purpose up to a point, but we're looking at such a large area now that you just can't stand in one place and give it the old eyeball sight. You actually need to know what your elevation is there, how the elevation is treated to the endpoint, which for drainage is certainly the retention area behind public works. So it is a critical part of, of supply and process.
And then would the topographical take into account that not only the drainage issues, but was underneath there already? Like there's the sprinkler system and the drains?
They, they will come to superintendent or anybody who happens to know. When they walk the site, they'll actually see some of those drainage, those will be noted on there.
Is that the ultrasound things that they come up with or?
Pardon me?
Is that the ultrasound machines they?
I, no, they will not, they don't actually look down in the ground. It's the, it's the top of the ground elevations that they have to deal with because it's the top of the ground that directs the water at this point. Until you take control of that water and funnel it into a, you know, into a pipe or into a ditch, whatever it may be. So they're actually looking, you would be surprised probably at some of the elevation changes that we have out here.
Great, any more discussion? We have a motion in a second. Roll call.
Trustee Gonzalez?
Yes.
Or?
Yes.
Pearson?
Yes.
Pop?
Yes.
Grayson?
Yes.
Grayson, okay, great.
Yes.
You guys speaking some?
Should have just left the answer at the same time.
Yeah.
At this time, Mr. Mayor, I believe that Chief Sipcar, I have a couple of items, and then Superintendent Brazil.
One thing of interest in that is that we set Halloween hours the same for treating last year as we did this year, it's from three to seven. And we'd like to remind everybody that, you know, if somebody's got a porch light on or if their house is decorated, that's probably the place to go. If they're not, probably stay away from there and check your kids candy. You know, if the package is sealed, it doesn't mean that it was tampered with, it just means that somebody at the factory, you know, didn't do a good job unless you inspect the candy yourself to see something's wrong. And if you do see that, obviously report it to us. There is an early dismissal, like Crete County School District that day, so we expect kids to be out at that time. We just don't want them being out like at this time, it's a little bit dangerous once we get past the white light. Yeah, good, that's all I got.
Superintendent Brazil?
No problem. We already talked about the parking lot improvements and that's one thing that the last thing that we've been talking about. It's in-house, by the way. The last thing, I think, that we can talk about is the Safrock School project is near completion. There's a few small details that have to be finished, but any residents that's passed by there, it's almost ready for acceptable watching from a downtown center, which at this point will probably be completed within the next two weeks, barring any unforeseen. Couple of sections of sidewalks were cracked during installation, they ripped those out and since fixed them, waiting for here times and other final details are about to be completely interesting. Other than that, good as usual.
So David, that large section that's missing with sidewalk, that was a crack section, is that what happened?
That was a crack section, yeah, it cracked during, or it's actually been fixed. I think they fixed it yesterday. They pulled the boards, they backed those dirt and regrasped that area. And there's one other area, as I walked the site yesterday and found another crack further south towards the first section by the neon church, and I've marked that with red, not our engineers knowing if it goes back on there.
Mr. Brazil? I know somebody in Aspen, I don't recall who it was, that they thought the sidewalks were supposed to be done further south at one point. Do you know what the?
Maybe during, during engineering, it might have gone south, closer to south. I believe the first proposal that was submitted for the, for an drive out brought it all the way to Margaret Street. Due to budget, it was straight with the state, I'm sure that was shortened up and only X over an hour, or a different form. The actual states have paid, we would have had to reverse the rest of it and that's a viable option.
Okay. Any other questions for superintendent?
Mr. Mayor, that concludes my report, thank you.
Okay. At this time, the mayor's agenda, I'm going to jump ahead to executive session because we have a couple of brief things we need to discuss before we vote. And it should be very brief, so hang tight, we'll be back. So I accept the motion to go to executive session. Twelve? All right, under my agenda, I have. All right, under my agenda, I have, let me just describe a couple of things here that we are going to be doing going forward. There's been some discussion in the past regarding our expectations for our partnerships with community partner programs, baseball, football, whatever. And that has to do with our expectations for certain things like background checks and proof of insurance and all that kind of stuff. As such, we are making appointments to some commission appointments as well as commission committee appointments, as well as some employment scenarios. And the process is being reestablished at this point because we have to go through a neighboring police department who has the equipment to expedite that. And so we are doing background checks now on all of our new appointments, new employees, things of that sort, just as a formality. We don't want any surprises or anything else. So I have, just so you all understand, I have two individuals both selected at this time for the police commission, and I have two individuals selected at this time for the planning and zoning committee, which would fill those committees at present. There's a consideration, I was talking to the attorney about, there actually may be expiration dates with the police commission. There may actually be a third appointment I need to make for the police commission as well. And at the next meeting, we will also make sure that we have reestablished the expiration dates for the committees and commissions because there's been some lack of synchronization with the state law regarding, they're supposed to actually expire in April of the fiscal year of the, you know, it coincides with the election cycles, the fiscal calendar for the municipality, things of that sort. And there's various reasons why they do it that way, but by state code, we're required to have all of those expire at that time. So following that pattern, what I will do is I will adjust the expiration dates for the same years, but for April of those years. And so with your understanding, that's what we're going to do. So at the next board meeting, I hope to have the background checks in place and potentially a third person for the police commission. And that will fully operate that and we'll look forward to that. The other thing that we're looking into is, because of the importance of the police commission and the need for them to meet, and it's a consumption of their personal time, I'm asking for consensus from the board. I would like them to be compensated similar as the planning and zoning commission, whereas they don't necessarily meet every month, but what I'd like to see happen there would be commensurate to, I believe it's a hundred dollars a month the planning and zoning gets currently. And I would like that to be stated in such a way that it's a hundred dollars per month, provided they meet during that month. And I just need to make sure we're okay with that provision so that we can make sure that we have the ordinance amended for the next meeting to deal with that. Can I get a consensus from you on the acceptability of a modest compensation like that?
That's fine. And also in that ordinance, are you placing a staggered term limit?
The terms will be staggered and they'll be restated. We'll have a document that will be submitted for attachment to the minutes of the following meeting that will identify, because we haven't had that previously, that has stated the slots A, B, C, D, E, F, whatever, like the planning and zoning positions. We haven't actually had a document carried forward, so we will state that at that time so it'll be a matter of public record. So at least at this point in time, it'll be clarified. Because we haven't had that to go back on, all we've had is like somebody's been appointed, nobody knows what position, what slot they were put in. So we're going to clarify that as well. That'll just be a separate document, that'll be an exhibit to be attached to that. Mr. Attorney?
If I may, or in those good points, the one issue that we'll have to resolve is the salaries for those individuals. It's supposed to be the appropriation, so I have to find the money for this year, which is going to be a tremendous amount. But for next year, we're going to budget the appropriation.
For the police commission.
It can come out of administrative salary, right?
That'd be fine.
So it would be, we'll have the ordinance for each four individuals with the salaries for the next meeting.
Okay.
So once they meet, it'll be a hundred dollars.
A hundred dollars per month, provided they meet during that month.
Yes, sir. For every.
For each. Well, zoning, yeah, zoning is already established, something like that, but we'll clarify that as well if needed too.
Again, we're talking about salary and appropriating funds. Are we talking a hundred dollars per time they meet or a hundred dollars a month period?
Hundred dollars, a hundred dollars per month, provided they meet during that month. If they go three months, six months without meeting, because there's no need for them to meet, planning and zoning doesn't get paid like that either.
In the beginning, there will be several meetings. Are we, you know, are you only looking at a hundred dollars for the month because of how many times they meet during that time?
That's my recommendation. Now, planning and zoning had a meeting workshop the other day. I don't blame me getting paid extra for that. That was just a course of the, you know, follow-up that they felt they needed to do that was outside the regular scope of their timeframes.
Okay.
And currently, there's no provision for compensation. I'm looking to find a reasonable method to encourage them to meet regularly, you know. And, you know, I feel like you're taking people's time, you need to find a way to compensate them somehow.
A part of that from them.
So we'll have something prepared for the next meeting that'll allow for that. So the planning and zoning board, police commission, that'll be addressed at the next meeting. We'll be ready to go with that. I apologize for the delays, but we're getting some of those things worked out and identifying where we want to make sure we do everything exactly the right way. At this time, I have three appointments for the positions that have been posted. They've been posted on the website for the last couple of months. We have had a total of forty-eight resumes that we've received and conducted eighteen interviews for the three positions. I mean, there's a lot of good resumes, and there's a lot of good people that were submitted resumes and such, but we were identifying those that were best suited for those positions, and we didn't want to, you know, overwhelm the individuals that, you know, haven't come in unnecessarily. The candidates that I'm looking for, and this is my recommendation, and I need the consent and approval a little more on these, for finance director, Darrell Bulliner of Moni. And I entertain a motion to approve that.
Yes, sir. Entertained a motion to accept, offer that appointment to that individual.
Yeah, okay. I'll accept the, entertain a motion of it.
So move.
Sorry.
Okay, Gonzalez and Graysick. Rocco?
Trustee Gray.
Yes.
Gonzalez.
Yes.
Horn.
Yes.
Pearson.
Yes.
Pop.
Yes.
Graysick.
Yes.
Yeah, and just to clarify, there's a, that these, both, all three of these are contingent on further examination of their backgrounds and physicals. So I just want to make sure that applies to all three of these. The next one we have is candidate for the assistant village administrator. Again, we had, just, I just want to reiterate, we had at least three good choices for each of these positions, and we wanted to make sure we picked the right individuals that were going to not have, just have the right skill set and the right potential that could hit the ground running as quickly as possible. The next one is Barbara Ray, and that is for assistant village administrator. And I would entertain a motion to accept, or offer her, finalize, or formalize the offer to her as well in the same contingencies.
Second.
Okay, Horn and Gonzalez. Rocco?
Trustee Gonzalez.
Yes.
Horn.
Yes.
Pearson.
No.
Pop.
Yes.
Graysick?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
What's it count?
We have three passes, one no, and the rest.
That's right, sir.
Three yes.
Three yes, one no, one bad.
I'll cast the affirmative vote on that.
Was it four yes?
Gonzalez, yes, Horn, yes.
Gray, yes. Graysick, yes, there's four.
Four, one, one.
Okay. That's one. If there's any question, I cast the affirmative vote on my own choice. Finally, for the building department manager, gentleman James Smith of Moni, Illinois. And I'm looking for an affirmation to.
Offer that petition to that individual, no?
Yep.
Second.
Okay, Pop and Graysick. Rocco?
Trustee Horn.
Yes.
Pearson.
Yes.
Pop. Graysick.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Gonzalez.
Yes.
Okay. Also, we are in the process of dealing with some annexation and pre-annexation agreements. I had a meeting recently with seven property owners about the potential of annexing into the village, and they were very favorable to the possibility. And I just wanted to bring the board up to that awareness. We're taking steps to define our perimeter and protect our long-range potential. And I just want to make sure you're all aware of that. We are going to be taking steps towards it. I just want to make sure that, do you guys have any questions pertaining to any of that? I just want to make sure you guys are all aware of that. Yeah, Mr. Attorney, go ahead.
Thank you, John. Mr. Wallace has been very helpful with respect to some of these annexation agreements along with the mayor. It appears as though some of them, it's a little more, I won't say complicated, but there's a lot of work to do. With the board's permission, there is an individual, highly respected attorney, who's got a lot of input with respect to annexation. And if it's okay with the board, I'd like to use his services. He would run it through my office, he would work most under my supervision. He's well-known in the Joliet area, very well-versed in annexation and pre-annexation agreement. His hourly rate is usually three hundred fifty dollars an hour. He would reduce this to two hundred dollars an hour. His name is Mr. Kavanaugh from Joliet, Illinois. He does a lot of work before Will County Board, very well-respected. I would call him, his rates are very, very reasonable.
But if he early, early rules have that prices, won't he?
Yes, sir. He would charge two hundred dollars per hour. And then most attorneys, law firms will charge for xerocing, faxes, postage, lunches, mileage. He won't do that. He'll charge for certain expenses, but not everything. And he's, from my discussions with him over the phone, I've been at it for twenty-seven years. He's very reasonable, very well-respected. He did a lot of work for, before the Will County Board several years ago, but very, very well-known.
Is that Richard Kavanaugh?
Yes, sir. Kavanaugh, Grumley, and Gorbold from Joliet, Illinois.
And I think, just so you guys understand, you know, at times, the village actually has four or five different law firms that would use one capacity or another, whether it be prosecution, whether it be labor litigation, whatever the case may be. You know, Larry does a phenomenal job as our everyday legal counsel, but there are those times where you need to call somebody who has expertise in dealing with certain matters. Part of the pre-annexation agreements are, there's some construct to the wording that's critically important that incorporates a, what's the best way to describe that, Larry, where it would, it would outlive the current property. Because in some cases, these properties may be acquired by the state.
Yes, sir. What we're trying to do is make these pre-annexation agreements twenty years. We're trying to make them as binding as possible, run with the land, or record the pre-annexation agreement. There's also, you know, you have to, we have to sell Moni when our advantages are. And the more detailed, the better. And Mayor Farquhar and Administrator Wallace have worked extensively on this. But I think you get to the point where you have to knock on the door through a legal counsel and say, who's your attorney? Take a look at it, we'll work with you. We're not allowed to hurt anybody, but we want to make it as binding as possible. So in case eighteen years from now, some annexing to the village and property is contiguous, we're there. So we're trying to cover our borders.
And just so you guys understand, we're not looking to change the lifestyle of anybody with their current property usage or anything like that. The goal here is to merely establish the boundaries that we'd like to be at at some point, like pre-annexation or whatever the case may be. If somebody's got a current use on their property where they're at, and it's relevant to us getting to our perimeter where we like it to be, you know, in my opinion, it's relevant to afford them some waivers, if you will, some abatement sometimes, so as it doesn't cost the village, but it doesn't cost them a change in what they're currently used to. And at some point, that will expire by change of owner, by change of use, by change of, you know, different things in that regard. And at that point, that's when the waivers and the fees and all that kind of stuff typically would stop. But if we don't do that, we'll be regretting thirty years from now, twenty years from now, and many of us will not have any interest in being right here in this room necessarily. There will be a generation behind us that'll go, why didn't they do this? And I think it's important that we do now what we sometimes critique our predecessors from decades past for allowing some of the property to go to University Park, or to things like that in the past. And it's important for us to step up and engage our community at large.
Yes, sir.
If I may, we've already sent out three letters to, we believe, Jordan Maney, or something. We did track searches on it, Mayor Farquhar and Administrator Wallace. We did track searches on it, we found out who the owners are through the pins. We sent letters, one lives in Frankfurt, one lives in South Gill.
Eric Gordon.
Near Kansas Key. Haven't received response, but not for lack of trying. We sent out letters just for a meeting. They sit down and talk with us. We'd like to work with you if at all possible. And you're talking, I think, over a hundred forty acres, so, but so far, no response.
Okay, Mr. Chair. And just so you also are aware, I had sent a letter to I dot because they own property in Heatherbrook in that area, as well as there's sixteen and a half acres that they own near Eagle Fair, that they own because they acquired it when there was a, and a lot of that, that's, some of this is coming in. So I sent a letter to the legal chief counsel for I dot, asking them for the procedures to deal with I dot because typically, if annexation has to come into play with a piece of property, if you're going, if the forest preserve is there, it becomes a conduit to get to where you're going, just like crossing a road is not a big deal. You have to have a three-hundred-foot path or whatever the case may be. But crossing a parcel that is owned by utility or the unit of government, not a municipality, typically it becomes a pass-through. But we are, we're trying to identify the exact agenda that I dot has, and we're not completely comfortable with their position on things. And so at this point, we have extended a letter to them, asking them for, there was, there's been some interest by somebody who has, there's somebody that has property interest in Heatherbrook that is interested in annexation, but I dot's property is between us and them. So in order for us to get to that point, we need I dot to acknowledge our ability to get through them to that other parcel. So we're trying them on that, and that's just one of the things as well. So just want to make sure everybody's aware of that. I mean, Heatherbrook's, just so you all know, the airport gets shipped a mile south. So the property that's in Heatherbrook, and that's sixteen and a half acres on the corner of Eagle Fair, Will Center, on that southeast, east corner of Eagle Fair, there's a little pie-shaped thing there. That has no long-term purpose to I dot any longer. It was acquired from, when they purchased all the land from the bottom of those for Heatherbrook at the one time. And since the airport ships it a mile south, all those parcels are no longer relevant to them either. So this shouldn't, should not be an issue for them, but it's going to be a formality, and dealing with their chief counsel is not as easy as dealing with Larry, so anyhow. Any questions or discussion about what we're trying to achieve here? I just want to make sure you guys are fully aware of what we're trying to accomplish. And if you guys have any input that you'd like to throw back at us as well. Okay. Next, ICSC. I had left some information on your desk, your tables are pertaining to this. I had the opportunity to go to ICSC in Chicago, which is a, just a more of a localized. I had the opportunity to go to ICSC in Chicago, which is a, just a more of a localized venue. It's the first time our village has ever been to that. It has to do with retail, real estate convention is what it comes right down to. I think that one of the things that I observed there, for me, was more exploratory. It wasn't like I was going there really hoping to, like, bring back a new business, per se. I did have an opportunity to meet with a couple of franchise, corporate franchise handlers. And I addressed the concerns we had about one of the franchises here in town. And they are going to work on remedy in that, even if it goes back to franchise holders ago on that particular scenario. They were very determined to find out, and it's not been run to their expectations. And that's just kind of an old side note for you guys to be aware of. We, by attending this, it gave me an idea, because I've been to business expos and things like that years past through various venues, and this is an opportunity for us to gain exposure. We are in the process now, we've already formalized the, the direction that we're going with the retail market study. There is an opportunity in May of next year for us to participate with a group of other villages in the south suburbs that are part of the Chicago South and Economic Development Council. Currently, Park Forest, Olympic Field, South Allen, Richie Park, and University Park are signed on. Each of us, Glenwood, Flossmore, I'm hoping Moni, and Chicago South and Visitors Bureau are also considerations for participating in that. The, the cost for something of this nature would be anywhere, it could be $10,000 to put on something like this. By, by co-opping with the other communities, it can bring it down to, you know, the information I got from the lady from EDC was 1320 per municipality. Could be less if there's more municipalities that participate. And that's, to me, going there as a group brings with us the strength of our region, and yet the individuality that we have to offer that's different from each of these other towns. So, Mr. Minister, I know you and I have talked about this to some extent. Do you have any info on that?
Mr. Mayor, my only input is, is just basically that it pretty much becomes cost-prohibitive to blaze a trail on an individual basis. And it carries much more impact when you have a region that shows communities working together and crossing those boundaries. Everything doesn't stop just at the municipal boundary, working to better the region as a whole, as opposed to an individual approach. And, you know, history has shown that in our initial meeting with the market study person that was hammered home again. You know, it's great, we have to look out for Moni, but we also need to take into consideration what's good for the region and what's going to serve everyone in the region. This is a great opportunity for us to, to show that.
So at this point, I'm, this would actually be into May of the next year, so this could be something that could actually be completely budgeted for than everything else at that point. I'm just wanting to get a consensus that you guys are favorable to us going out and partnering with other communities to bring business back to our town specifically.
You state for the record what ICSC stands for? Does that say here?
International Conference of Shopping, or...
Shopping Centers?
Shopping Centers, yes.
Okay. I thought, I knew that sort of was, but, you know...
Yeah, and when they call it recon, it sounds kind of like military, like espionage, but it's, it's the real estate convention is what it, what it is, so...
So would one of us from the village go off to that event if we, if we decide to approve something like this?
That would definitely, you wouldn't want to have the event and not be there.
Right.
So, yeah. And it's a three-day event. It's May 10 through the 20th, so...
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I'm just looking at communities from Cook County and attached to this, you know, I agree. We have to learn to work with our neighbors. We've got a lot of incidents that will occur in Will County, you know, versus Cook County. Something to take into...
Well, no, no question about it. And the way we present ourselves with our own materials within that, we're not going and sharing materials. We're going to share the space, working together side by side with our neighbors. But our materials will promote our TIF districts, our infrastructure, with this fiber network that we have down through here now. Not all these towns have that available to them. You know, we have, we have certain specific benefits that we have, you know, with the fact that we are Will County.
So there's no restrictions on what we...
No, we're going to do, if given permission, we will do what DuPage did, you know, they referenced it in here. Come up with a kind of theme that works for the space that'll be used. But then, as far as the individual materials, there'll be something that we prepare and present ourselves to the individuals. So when I, when I visited the Choose DuPage exhibit at ICSC at Navy Pier, it was, it was nice. And I, I get samples in my office. I'd be glad to show you a variety of the things that were presented there. But each of the towns had their own folder packets, whatever the case may be, that they were presenting in that area. And each of them strove to have the best of form with the materials.
And I just was seeing number four on there, and that became a concern.
Yep.
Well, can you just answer a question, actually? If the IS...
ICSC.
ICSC is at Navy Pier, why do we need to go there all the time?
ICSC Navy Pier is actually what they refer to as the deal-making center, where a lot of the activity there is, a lot of the activity there is actually not even taking place on the floor. It's more of an exposure. At Navy Pier, you had towns like Tidley Park, and they had Miss Illinois because she's from Tidley Park. And, you know, they had a few other towns that were there individually. But there's a broader base of businesses that are at the one in Nevada than they are in one in Illinois. And you're trying to identify with a bigger scope than the ones that just necessarily come to Illinois. I don't disagree, you know, with the, the perspective that we need to go towards that for the Navy Pier one in the future as well. And I think establishing this sets the trend and the pattern that can easily be incorporated, much like DuPage did it up there. But you'll notice that the towns that were in DuPage, they're also doing the same thing in Nevada. Because that's where, that's the big conference center. And that's where all that stuff takes place, and that's where a lot of the visibility takes place. My point is, is do we want to wait another year or more, you know? Or do we want to go ahead and expend $1,300 roughly to participate, to cohabitate in that scenario, to try to identify and make a presence for ourselves? It's not to say you're going to get anything on the first time you do anything, but you're warming up the, you're building relationships. You're establishing the opportunity for people to recognize who we are. I guarantee you, nobody over there right now knows who Moni is. Yeah.
I guess I'm just looking at this $1,300 as, you know, the selling point where I'm also considering flight hotel...
Oh, I understand.
Additional costs.
I understand. I understand. And there again, I, I'll defer to the administrator on this, but I believe that if this has to do with our economic development and it has to do with the promotion of our TIF districts as well, that there is a measure of the TIF funds that might be able to be used for some of the materials, at least for this? Or some of the partnership on the marketing aspect of this?
I would reserve my answer at this point until I investigate it.
That's right.
Absolutely. Many times, you know, professional fees are part of it. Those are delineated from time to time. You just need to reserve that.
That's right. I'm, I'm asking for permission when I go on the 21st to meet with the EDC, the Southland EDC, to at least say, "Yes, we are optimistically, you know, looking forward to doing this." If you guys don't want us to go, then, you know, that's, that's your choice.
I don't know if we're ready yet. That's my personal opinion.
And I would just think, consider maybe this as an FYI until we find out more about it. And, you know, this is the first time I've ever heard anything like this, so...
I understand. The problem is, is that if we're going to move forward, if we're going to learn what we need to learn in order to be where we need to be to bring the business here, we have to leave Moni to do that.
So you're looking for a consensus from the board?
I'm looking for consensus to, to generally identify the fact that we're willing to move forward and participate in, in this.
Okay. And it could, you want to say, it could be anywhere from $1,300 to, I believe you said, $10,000?
No, 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 no. $10,000 is, we have to do by ourselves. That's why I'm saying $1,300 compared to $10,000 is, is great. You know, you're sp, you're dividing the load between everybody that participates.
Well, and this just references a planning meeting on the 21st.
But they're also looking for, and to...
Make a consensus.
I mean, I'm not asking you to spend money today. I'm just asking you to...
And I'm just saying, going to a planning meeting, that sure wouldn't hurt, but maybe you could bring some homework back to us so we have some idea of what will be happening and what will be there.
I, I just, generally speaking, I'm just looking for a general consensus that this is a direction we would like to go or we would not like to go. Because I'm not going to go to a planning meeting if you guys are saying, "We're not going to spend $1,000 on marketing for our town." If you guys, I'm just saying, if you guys are taking that position, I respect it. But I'm not going to waste my time and go to a planning meeting if we're not going to be a player.
Well, and I think you're putting words in our mouth by saying that we're not willing to spend $1,000 on advertising for our town.
Well, I'm trying to get some clarification on that. This is a great opportunity for advertising to retail businesses. And I'm just trying to identify, if it's, if you don't feel like we're ready for it, I, I respect it.
There's a lot of information that has to go on there, and preparation, presentation that has to be done in order to attract these businesses to retail market, you know, having a lot of those numbers and figures to be able to walk in with. That means you have to be prepared for this. I'm not saying that we don't do this in the future.
I understand how to get prepared.
And I'm also saying that this 1320 is, you know, fine, yes, it's a low amount, but there are other expenses that are, that is not being presented.
I agree, I agree. This is our buy-in for the event, so that's all it is.
I think it's a great idea. I think you got, I think that's a very reasonable cost to do, to go to an event like this, world-class event like this, and get our, get our town out there.
Mr. Attorney, that's something. So can I suggest something just from the board's thought? Maybe you want to make, make a motion not to exceed at this point in time, the 1320. And then you could revisit the issue sometime in Las Vegas or around. But if you give the motion not to exceed 1350, at least you know what your top liability is at this point in time. If it proves fruitful, at that point in time, when they meet in Las Vegas, the board has time to consider, you know, if you're going to spend additional funds.
Yeah, in, in general, I, I don't disagree with that. I do have some, well, if you want to offer.
I'm sure.
Okay, yeah. Going with the attorney, so you want to go with consensus first, see if you really want to do this, and then worry about what kind of money you're looking to spend.
Yeah, I mean, if we're not ready, we're not ready.
I mean, it, it seems like we're, we're discussing over stuff that's really, I'm not saying irrelevant, but we're going to drag this out for another, you know...
Don't worry.
And let's make a consensus and this is...
So, well, and I would just like to have known about it prior to walking in than today, you know? If you had, you know, some homework done on it. I've never heard of any of that, so...
But generally speaking, do you feel like we're ready to start presenting ourselves in some form?
Looking at this date, May 14 and 20, our market study will be done, and we'll have a whole lot of materials ready to go by then. I do believe so. But I, right now, if you're looking for, you know, to put a check down for 1320 to say that we're going to participate, like I said, you know, going to a planning meeting on the 21st, I don't think anybody has any qualms in, you know, finding out more about it. But if they're looking for consensus or ready for that check on May...
I'm not asking for a check. I'm just asking for a general consensus that you feel like we're going to be ready by May to present ourselves outside of Moni, and specifically in Nevada. Excuse me, I'm, I'm sorry, but we have to deal with this as a board. Trustee, thought?
I have no problem.
Trustee, is it? Trustee Pearson?
Sure.
Trustee Orton?
Yes.
Trustee Gonzalez? Maybe? Not real sure. I mean, we're not, I'm asking for a vote. I'm just asking for, how do you feel?
How do I feel? I wish I'd known more about it, but 1320 seems like a small price to pay. I'd like to see what the other towns are presenting and...
And, and I've got materials from one out to the Navy Pier. I'll be glad to share those with you. Trustee Gray?
No.
Okay.
One May?
Yeah. And that wasn't a rule.
Just a consensus.
Yeah, I agree, so... Okay, next item. And if, if any of you have questions specifically or suggestions on the last item there, we'll talk to me in a joint, we'll be glad to identify all the things that will meet the expectations and information that you're looking for. Next item, facility usage agreement. We are in the process of trying to, we started with a park usage, facility usage policy. And there were some inherent limitations to the way that was drafted. And I reached out to the Creek School District to ask them what their building usage policies were, facility usage, et cetera. They provided that. I've given you guys each a copy of that, just as a comparison and explanation. They do have a section in here which describes waivers, rental fees for certain criteria. And I just wanted you to be aware of that as we move forward. One of the things I think that is important that we just reaffirm, and again, if I could just get a general consensus before we try to put it in writing, there are some basic things that I think that we need to identify from a liability perspective when we partner with an organization, because we give them free usage of facilities or whatever the case may be, there's certain perceived relationship that we have with those organizations. Larry?
Yes, sir.
That if we are, for instance, we had the Creek Olmans came in and rented the facilities from us last Sunday, and they'll be here in another week and a half again. That's a business relationship. It's a transaction. They paid for the facility usage, et cetera. Even though they adhere to a high standard internally with their organization and everything else, we weren't in a partnership with them where they don't have an ongoing relationship with the village. It was strictly a business transaction where, just like the people that used the park building on Saturday for five or six hours, they paid for that. You know, we're not, we're not asking for background checks for people that are simply doing a business transaction. But when we partner with an organization, there's an inherent, there's an implied relationship that we are partnering with them and potentially culpable for things that they are doing or not doing correctly. And as such, after talking to a legal counsel about it, I believe there, there's some basic premises that I think that on behalf of our constituents in our town, since the organizations are using our facilities, that would need to be, some of the conditions that we would incorporate as far as part of our, in order to get free usage of facilities or whatever the case may be, there's certain expectations. Certain minimum things like if you're working with kids, have the background check of all your leaders, all your coaching staff, the people that are dealing with the kids, things like that. I think that's very important. I know the school district, you can't even be a chaperone on a field trip if you don't have a background check. You know, we're starting to implement that now with our new hires and committee appointments and everything else. That's important. You know, the fact that they have proof of insurance, you know, liability and waiver and indemnifications for the village itself, as well as, I think in some cases, it's important for us to even consider that when there's an ongoing perpetual use of our facilities and things of that regard, that we may even want to consider the importance of expecting that their organizations are run fair, honest, and open, such as their elections are open and accessible to the membership that they serve, the constituents that are part of our community that they're trying to serve on our behalf. We're not trying to run their organizations. We're really saying, "Please make sure that you're accountable to the members of our community that we're partnering with you on behalf of." And there might have been one or two other things, but I think generally speaking, those are some of the things that I believe are important for us to set the tone of. Obviously, you know, abiding by all the federal, state, county, you know, health code, all the other kind of stuff, that's just, you know, respectful and important, but... So, you guys, I, I... guys, I, I, I'm bringing it up for discussion because I think that we need to move forward on this so that the organizations we partner with understand the criteria that going forward in the next seasons, they'll have, I mean, we didn't start off that way, but I think that there's been that expectation.
Mr. Mayor, I agree with you, I think one of the, the other items in there is accountability, you know, financial accountability.
Sure.
Not so much that we, the village, want to see their books, but they be held accountable to their members, to their, their players. They should be doing a regular organizational meeting, you know, most organizations that belong to, you receive minutes of what's in the treasury and how expenditures are being made or any funds coming in, and how that's being properly tracked.
True.
To make sure, I, we had organization when I first moved into this town 13 years ago, where they ended up moving out, leaving, skipping town basically because they didn't, you know, they had a lot of questions about how the concession was being run and how the funds were being tracked.
True.
And if you want, if you want to play in town for free, which you had no issue with, then fine.
So, so it's a minimum standard that, that meet the same criteria we put on ourselves.
And then, as you said too, I would, in a borrow from the Crete Mooney School District again, this is a business transaction, this is a facility agreement, if we want to enter into partnerships, I suggest we do something almost like the school district has done with municipalities and do an intergovernmental agreement. So, we as the village board enter into an agreement with their board, and this is our expectation.
And you can do that, but an intergovernmental agreement expects that both intergovernmental bodies are elected by the people and serve the people.
My point exactly, so that's all I'm saying, is this is the business part of it, but if we want a partnership, I think it has to be separate.
Excellent.
And there is, you know, they actually have a freedom.
Oh, I understand, I understand. I also want to make sure that we're not being so heavy-handed in our expectations, that makes it impossible.
And that's, you know, and that's the point too, and I think the organizations that we do have relationships with or that are in our town, we don't want to drive away that we are trying to run them, we want to be good neighbors and part of them, and being good stewards of all of our tax dollars, that we should be able to offer that, you know, not only the business part of it, but the partnership.
Right, and, and I got to tell you, I was delighted, as much as there's like the cross-town rivalry and things like that at times, I was delighted to pull into the parking lot tonight and see the Crete Bulldogs playing the Mooney Mavericks in a scrimmage, I just thought that was really cool, you know?
It was really fierce in Little Rock out there.
It was a great game.
It was a great game.
Did you win?
Yes. Sorry.
What were you, what, what, what weight division were you playing in? Sorry, never mind. Trustee Gray, how do you feel about those issues?
Um, I'm just, keep my mouth shut on issues right now, and I was.
Okay.
I'm not, I have a lot of things in my head that I'm not going to say right now.
Okay.
I mean, I agree with some things, but I think that there's.
Well, if, if, if you don't bring it up, we don't know, we, we can't.
No, no, because, no, no, because there's a certain organization in this town that, that we should really key on and not let them think that they run this town, and they actually think they run this town.
Well, I think as long as we hold a certain expectations, open and honest, accountability, fair elections, and financial.
That's a lot of work to do with this organization.
What's that?
It's a lot of work to do with this organization.
I get it, but I think as long as they're adhering to those criteria, and they're serving the needs of the community, then we'll be okay. Trustee Hop, you okay with that? Trustee Razor?
Yes.
Trustee Pearson, I know you basically.
I'm on contention, yes.
Yeah, thank you. All right, so just that we have that as a consensus that, you know, you'd like to see that in some drafted format for partnering with, and I got to tell you, I got a call from, I, I, forgive me for not getting the name right, but the lady who's the, one of the directors for the Girl Scouts, and I was, I was delighted to hear her tell me that, listen, we don't believe community service is just something we have as part of our mission statement, but it's actually what we want to do. So, like, when you're heading to Halloween happenings, call the Girl Scouts because they want to help. You know, when you're doing different things like that, they want to be a part of giving back, not just saying, oh, we want to use your building, but we really don't care about anything other than what we do. You know, I was delighted to hear that kind of an expectation, that they truly want to be not just users of our facilities and serving their little subset of residents, but they truly want to be a community partner, and I'm, I'm delighted to hear that, because we don't get that from every group, you know? Some groups come in, it's like an eight, as you indicated, I'm not going to go specifically, but, you know, some groups pretty much, you know, even security, set of keys to our buildings was nearly impossible, you know? So, enough said on that, but, so we do have good organizations in our town and good visitors to our town, and, so, and I'll move forward with trying to formalize some documentation to amend our facility usage agreement to define who our community partners are by description, sort of like the Crete Mooney School District does, along with the, the benefits that come with it, and then we'll review that as a group again. I just want to make sure I got the consensus in form of that. And at that point, that is all I've got to say. Mr. Attorney?
I have nothing, yeah.
At this point, we have officials' reports, I'll start with Trustee Hop. Okay, thank you. And Halloween happenings with Trustee Gray and Razor, I believe you had to get it in the last meeting, and I know Trustee Gonzalez is also participating in that as well. You have any updates on that?
I have Anthony, you know, my cousin over there.
Gray, Grayson?
Grayson.
Maybe from 6:00 PM to 9:00 PM, we're going to be doing bonfire, A-Rise, costume contests, we're also going to have the kids DJ again, we've had the previous years, and it's the same kids DJ that we use at, kids that open summer. So, we're looking for volunteers, and we're also going to have the concessions stand open, Sound Out Dogs, Pop, stuff like that. If you're looking to volunteer, contact me, Heidi, or Bill, and, um, make sure you're out, and we'll see you up there.
What day is that?
October 26th, Saturday.
Anybody else for officials' report? Okay. One other item pertaining to the school district, going back to that, if I can just throw this in here, the school district, I got a call from one of the board members of the school district, and they are trying to figure out what to do with the building issues, especially with, over the Crete side of things, and the first question the school board member asked me was, how do you think the people in Mooney are going to feel about the tax increase? So, they are having meetings, please pay attention, please get involved, and tell your neighbors, and I'm not saying that whatever it is that they're doing is right or wrong, I'm just saying pay attention, it's important. I'm not going to make a editorial on this part, I just want to make sure you guys pay attention, so. Anything, anything?
The school board meetings are, if you go onto the school district website, you can watch them too, they are recorded, if you can't make it to the meetings, so you can watch it when you, when you have time too, so, yes, we all do.
But it's better to be there if you can.
It's better to be there, but we do take it.
Yep. Okay, anything else on our old business? Any new business?
I do have something, your mayor, your honor. Mayor? Jane? There is a Creamery cleanup this Saturday morning from 8:00 to 11:00 AM.
True.
And that would be over at the, since it's at the Creamery cleanup, it will be at the Creamery.
True.
And then, there's one person, I will not name their name out of respect for their privacy, a person who comes every week and takes notes, a lot of board meetings, I was a, I understand that she and her husband were in an accident, and just to keep them in, a serious accident, keep them in the thoughts and prayers.
Yes.
And that's all, yeah?
Anybody else? There's also the fire department, I believe, is having a, a.
Open house?
Open house, the raffle, and they're cutting a car in half or something, like that over at the firehouse this Saturday as well, there's a flyer up in the foyer, additionally, in the entryway, there's a document for everybody to read up on, I put it in each of the trustee's boxes, talks about the government shutdown, just the federal government, I guess.
Metro Columbia.
What's that?
Metro Columbia.
If you don't have your passport, then I can get one now, but anyhow, there's a list of the things that are affected by it, I've got it up in the entryway, so. At this point, we have open to the public, non-agenda items, please limit your comments to three minutes, and come to the point and give your name and address. Anybody? Okay. Executive session, we've already done that. At this point, we have action regarding the executive sessions issues, but those aren't ready to be approved at this point, and I'll accept a motion to adjourn.
Someone second.
Pearson, Razor, Rocco?
Yes.
Orton?
Yes.
Pearson?
Yes.
Hop?
Yes.
Grayson?
Yes.
And Gray?
Yes.